You can go.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Trotwood Madison Board of Education session, April 7th, April 2nd, 2020 via Google meets electronic communication. Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman? Here. Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, the meeting has been called to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. I now need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'm moved.
I second.
It's been moved. It's been moved by Mrs. Jeter Freeman. And we have a second, Mr. Norman Scares. Are there any changes or additions?
No.
Being done, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman? Yes. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman? Yes. And Ms. Moore?
Yes. The agenda has been adopted.
I'm here.
Hi, Ms. Brandreth.
Hello.
Good evening, okay?
It's good to be seen.
Is the Treasury report. Ms. Allen?
Yes, uh, just give me one second, please. Okay, I, I only have one thing this evening for you, that's the Treasury's report under 2A, and it's an approval with information only. Approval of the meeting minutes from March the 5th, 2020, March the 12th, 2020, and March 19th, 2020.
Thank you very much. Next up, Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, item A for information is a request for approval for donations. Um, Westbrook Village, the amount of $650 for, um, from Office Depot. And Westbrook Village, the amount of $150. Yeah, excuse me, the approximate value of $150 for the donation of a used flute and a used clarinet to, um, to Westbrook Village.
That was really great of Office Depot to make the donation.
Absolutely. Superintendent, item B is the request for approval for, um, we'll review information tonight in approval. The, the contract with Prodigy Building Solutions to solicit bids and quotes for us for the, for the building of a chiller over at the ELC. The chiller at the ELC has gone out. And at this point, in order for us to move forward with getting the chiller rebuilt and up and running in time for the, for the fall, we needed to get, uh, get this on. It's the same process, I don't remember if you guys remember the process we went through with, uh, Prodigy Building Solutions to build the chiller at the high school. The board has to approve this agreement for Prodigy to solicit bids and quotes and labor for the chiller. Uh, and then they, they work with those, those different entities to, um, to manage the, the production of the chiller, but they do not, they do not build the chiller themselves. What they do is they solicit the, solicit the bids for us. And, uh, the total cost is no more than $140,000 for the entire project. Uh, the scope of work is there, the scope of what, uh, they will be, uh, putting out to bid and putting out, uh, for quotes is there as well. And, you know, uh, we wanted to get this on and get this approved. You know, in the event that there is something financially that prevents us from this, we don't know yet, uh, we, we will make sure that we, you know, I update the board, but we wanted to, you know, get this going so we can have this up and running by fall with regards to the, to the rebuilding of the chiller at the ELC. Any questions on that one?
It's the same process we used before, correct?
Same exact process, uh, and what Prodigy does, what kind of serve as a, 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 as a production, I mean, a project management and just on, on behalf of the district, they solicit bids, we do not pay them to do this, they receive their, their, uh, their bid from, uh, the solicitation of the bids and working with the tips consortium. But it just, they just manage the, the project from, from beginning and the end and, and make sure we get the best bids and, and we do it all through consortium pricing, it's all public bid, so we're, um, we're good to go. But yes, we did the exact same process with the high school chiller.
Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent's item C is, uh, the personnel agenda. Um, I don't know if you guys have accessibility to it now, but I can read it to you. Item A1 is the recommendation for the approval of the following certified resignations. A2 is a recommendation, recommendation for approval for the following certified administrative contract. A3 is a recommendation for the approval of the following contract for the remainder of the school year at a prorated rate. B1 is the recommendation of a classified retirement. And that concludes Superintendent's items this evening.
Yeah, I, I have a question on A2. Um, 216 days, is that the norm?
Yes, uh, the administrative contracts for assistant principals are 216 days. 260 days for head principals year round, assistant principals and elementary principals are 216.
Okay, any questions? Next up, discussion items and update, thank you, Mr. Howard.
No problem.
And, uh, we are gonna get an update on our food service program, the number of students served and how that's going.
Okay, great, uh, we, we have been through, um, a couple of different varieties of, of, of serving students, um, from the initial, um, closure to where we are now. There have been several mandates that have come, that come out, uh, from the, from the state, the governor, that have forced us to do a couple of different things. Um, at this point, we are at a, at a, a point, at a, at a point where we're gonna be serving once a week on Wednesdays, and we are working to refine that process where we are serving enough food for five to seven days. Initially, we started out serving out of all five of our buildings, and we were averaging about 300 to 300, about 300 a day total. Um, Wednesday, when we went to just three buildings with us doing the, the whole five to seven day, whole week service, we served 850 meals just on Wednesday. Now, there've been some hiccups, uh, and I met with the superintendents today, and all of them are kinda, we're all kinda in the same boat. With the waived requirements and kinda moving this to a, to a summer-based food program, similar to what we do in the summer, uh, less requirements, different types of meals, uh, we, we've, we've served more people because more people know about it, and anybody 18 and under, we have to serve. So unfortunately, we probably didn't get all of our, all of our students, but, um, we did serve over, over 800 meals. But we're trying to work through some of that red tape and figure out if there's a way that we can deny people that come up. Uh, and Mr. Plupman and myself and, 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 uh, some of the folks working at the state are trying to figure out those, those guidelines, because what we do in the summer is we serve anybody that comes up, we cannot deny meals. And under that premise, you know, people can just come up, and as long as you're at, under, under the age of 19, 18 or, or younger, we can serve you. So we're working to see if there's a way that we can, um, identify who our students are and, um, and, and serve meals to specifically those folks. And we're, we're, we're just trying to work through that process. We're going, we're also refining our meals, we're, we're seeing if we can get approved for larger bulk items versus individually wrapped packages, instead of serving or putting in like five wrapped bags of sandwiches, possibly putting in a jar of peanut butter and a whole loaf of bread, a gallon of milk, which we, we, is what, is what we did last, like on Wednesday, a gallon of milk and a half a gallon of juice. We're, we're, we're trying to get through all of those guidelines and all of those, and all of that red tape, and as, as questions come up, the ODE and the USDA, they're, they're giving these approvals, but people are asking a lot of questions about how can we do this with regards to the, uh, the summer food program? Because remember, all of the meals that we serve are reimbursable and they come back into the district. So there's a litany of guidelines that we have to adhere to, and we're just trying to make sure that in our effort to, to support the community, we still follow those guidelines without, you know, without, um, you know, breaking any of the rules and being able to allow these meals to be fully reimbursable, because if we don't get that money back, food service will be in the hole, and, and that's one, one less thing we need to be concerned about at this point.
So were you able to, um, go back and take care of those parents that called the, um, the district?
Yes, we delivered five meals today on, on just that, um, that individual basis of folks that had some situations where they could not get to, um, get to the, uh, get to the sites. And, uh, we're, you know, we're, we're actively working to try to, um, solicit information from, uh, from folks. We got our, our parent engagers and our social workers also reaching out to some of the families that were on their caseloads to see if they, if they need the physical support with, with food or meals.
So under what circumstances, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, under what circumstances did we deliver meals to families?
There, there were a couple of parents that called us prior to us sending out the information and saying that they were not able to, they were not able to secure a ride. So we had some bus drivers that were working the, that were working the, um, the program, and they jumped in the van and went and touched base with some of the, oh, those folks and, and dropped some of those bags off. But on a large scale, we, we, we don't, we don't have the bandwidth to do that, but if we had some folk that gave us a call and said, hey, we can't make it today, or hey, I have, I, I can't get off until this time, we're, we're trying to support it any way we can.
Okay. What are some of the guidelines, if I can ask, what's, what are some of the guidelines that would prevent reimbursement? Um, only because I, I think we all know, and we've said it before, you know, caution has kinda been thrown to the wind, for the lack of a better term, um, that would, wha-what are the hurdles currently?
The, the big one right now, Mr. Scares, is can we serve or can we provide families bulk items versus individual items that already have identified nutritional content, sugar content, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So tho- those things are already approved based upon our purchasing, so if we move to a process where we're serving bulk items, where we're serving a pack of, a pack of cheese versus, versus, um, versus a sandwich that has already been approved. If we get that approval, which we, we're expecting that we can, we're just waiting on, on, uh, on bounce back from the USDA and, and, and the state, we'll, we'll be okay, but there, there's certain things that you have to serve in order for them to be reimbursable meals. One of the biggest, go ahead.
Uh, I, I just, what is the benefit one over the other?
No, the, the approval is based upon what you serve. Un- under the, the, um, under the program, you have to serve specific meals with specific nutritional, nutritional content, certain amounts of sugar, so on and so forth. So what we're saying is if we eliminate those, got, eliminate those restrictions and just are allowed to serve bulk items, and we say we put a loaf of bread in a, in a bag and say that this is for three meals with, with, with the
Oh, I got you.
With the five, you have to check off every kid.
Okay.
Every kid, we serve this kid, a servant of protein, a servant of carbohydrates, it's so restricted. So what we're trying to do is eliminate those requirements and put all of this stuff in a bag and say, it's this five meal versus having to count every individual kid. What we did with this is we packaged, we packaged, um, the individual meals and we checked them off and say, yeah, this is five meals. What we're saying is if we can just get that approval, which we think we are, some people are doing it, uh, and, and, and we realize that, that, um, that we're just gonna go ahead and just move on it, and then again, you know, with the aspect of waiting for, waiting for forgiveness later, but we just wanna make sure, and we believe we're moving that guidance, that we can just put all this stuff in here and say, this is five meals, and then be reimbursed for five meals at that point.
You know, that would also make the sandwiches fresher, because if you're trying to prepackage sandwiches for a week, you know, they might be a little soggy by Thursday, Friday.
Well, and you know what's some of the initial concern with some of, some of the things that we had in, in the, uh, you know, like we had some bananas that we had put in the freezer, and if you know anything about oxidation, they, they go brown, they're not bad, but they just go brown, so we had some bananas and we had, we had some lettuce and, you know, and, and, you know, and, and those are things that, you know, my food service guy, he's trying to be proactive and be healthy, he just doesn't wanna see in a bunch of just junk.
For the record, the way my kids been eating me out of house and home, they gonna eat a soggy sandwich in the middle.
If we can get to that point where we are, we're able to do that, which I believe we're, we're there, where we can, we, we can put bulk items in there, then and count those as a certain number of meals, then that's, that's what our process will look like come this Wednesday. So, so at this point, we're planning to produce 1,500 reimbursable meals for Wednesday. We served 800 this past week. This time, we're gonna try to put together 1,500 reimbursable meals for Wednesday.
That's, that's really great, because I know that, um, we were going from 11:30 to 5:00 or something like that, and we were out by 1:30.
Yeah, out about two buildings by 1:30, and then Westbrook finished up right around about 2:15, 2:30.
Are there, is there anything that is needed? Are there any donations you're accepting or anything like that?
You know, and, and here's the thing with that, Norman and I, and that's a great question. We cannot put things in the bags that we serve, and there's some concern with people just randomly coming up and just bringing things to donate based upon where that stuff is coming from. So what we're asking our folks right now is, is for time, and, uh, just getting folks in to help prepare the packages, and then at that point, go from there.
Do you need volunteers to help prepare the packages?
Right, so that, that's kinda what we'll, we're, we're, we're bringing people in first, but if we need additional volunteers, I will let you know. So folks are working, we're bringing in food service, transportation, and, and some of our peer professionals are coming in to, uh, to help prepare, prepare the, uh, prepare the bags, and we do them all in shifts. We got a group that comes in and preps, well, a group that comes in and separates five people, about four or five people, a group that comes in and packs, and then a group that comes in and delivers.
Here's, here's a, um, maybe an idea that you guys might be able to use, I don't know. Um, I personally would not feel okay with turning anybody away, but I also want our kids to be served first. Um, is there some sort of way we can create, um, maybe like, okay, this is the time that Trotwood students come, whether that's from like 11 to 2, you know, or whatever, and then from 2 to 3 or whatever, 2 to 5, um, then, you know, i- if you're not necessarily a Trotwood student, then that's your timeframe to come, because although I don't wanna turn anybody away, I also wanna make sure that our kids are fed.
I think that's a good idea. Let me, uh, let me talk to, uh, let me talk to the supervisor, and, uh, I'll follow up, I'll follow up with that. We, we bounced a couple of different things around, we bounced around, um, having, uh, ha- having Excel spreadsheets with our kids' names on them, so on and so forth, but the way the summer food program works, the, the federal government does not allow you to turn anybody away. So it, it, maybe that with, with, with the timeframe, that may be a, may be a, a, a good idea, where we can, where we can, you know, set, section off the, a se- section of time for our folks specifically.
Okay, yeah, we're not turning anybody away, they just need to come at this time.
Yep.
And, and Marlon, was there a concern with families that may go to all three sites, getting lunches at all three sites?
Well, eh, there, there were rumors that, that, that that may have been happening, and we just, I don't know, we gotta figure out how we can, you know, how we can manipulate that as well, you know, we'll, uh, you know, other than creating, you know, some type of database where i- it's in real time, where we check off the kids that come, you know, we, we
Uh, cause I had heard that too, here's another idea that may seem less antiquated. Um, when they pick up a meal, give them a ticket, you know, you don't have to keep track of it or, or anything like that, just give them a ticket, um, and then when they come, exchange the ticket for the meal, and then give them a new ticket for the following week, that way you know they're not getting a meal unless they have this ticket, you know what I'm saying? Um, and I'm not even, I, I don't even know if you have to keep track of those, um, you know, they just, in exchange for a ticket, they gotta give a, in exchange for a meal, they gotta give a ticket.
Okay, or show, or show a ticket because they're not getting out of their cars.
Right.
We, they're popping trunks and Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work through that, I, I, I share these ideas with my, with my team, and then I can report back, uh, I can report back to you guys what type of provisions we've put into place to try to make sure that we served, uh, served our kids. I really like that idea about sectioning off some time.
Or have, or have, have somebody punch a card.
Right.
You know, so they know that day it's been punched already.
What, the social distancing, I don't know if that would be an issue, because you guys are just putting it in the trunk, is that correct?
Yeah, not allowing anybody to get out of their cars, we stand, we have two people standing in the, uh, in the lot, and as they pull up, we tell them to hold on, we, we move a car ahead, they pop their trunk, if they can't pop their trunk, we put it on the ground, they come out, put it in their trunk, close the trunk, get back in their car, and they move, and then we move the next car ahead.
What, what's the script, and what are, what are we asking? Because one parent had two kids at one building and another kid at another building, but when she pulled up, she won't be fair, so she said, I have these two kids, but then she goes to another building to get a separate lunch for her other child. So what are we saying, are we just saying, how many children do you have in the district? And is it taken care of from that way?
We did that, we did that initially, but at this time, what we, what we think we're gonna do, if we can move to a bulk, we, we can limit it to like two bags.
Right, that makes sense.
Limited to like two bags per family, and then do it that way.
Do they have any student IDs, so when the car pulls up, the parent should have a picture or, I don't know what kind of student ID that they can show, and then they get the number of meals based on that?
No, we, our, our kids, our kids use their, their, um, their SSID number
Right.
Like in second grade, and they punch those numbers in, and they're responsible for their own student ID, so, no.
It's only at the high school then that they would have it, right?
No, uh, we don't have student ID.
Hmm.
Yep.
When did we do away with student IDs? I thought we had
It's been a minute, but I wasn't gonna say anything, Denise.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while, we haven't had Yeah, we haven't had student IDs for years.
Okay.
Ms. Moore, how long?
I'm sorry. You know what, Mr. Scares? I think they were doing away with them when I graduated.
Oh. Mr. Howard?
Just so you know.
Um, the checking, checking things off, uh, lists at each site through real time would, sounds like it might be
Most accurate way to keep count.
But, uh, how, how difficult do you think that would be to implement, uh, because we probably had to do it kinda remotely? Uh, would that be, do you see that as a major problem, or? Well, just getting it together, I, I don't know, it, it's something that I would talk to technology about, but, you know, are, are we gonna send like license plates, numbers, you know, you, you know what I mean? How, how in depth do we go with, like that? I, I, I think the easier and the less, more practical, probably the better, but, uh, I, I just, you know, I, I, I bounce some of these ideas around with the team, because that was a concern that we weren't feeding our kids, but it's been a concern to the point everywhere to, you know, Dayton, Dayton ran out of food, Northmont shut theirs down, because people were just, they were, they were coming as Yeah, just showing up, and you know, and I really don't know how we get ahold of it, you know, it's, you know, we're gonna put something in place, and then, I hate to say it, people will try to figure their way around that. But we, we, we're, we're gonna try to do the best
They ain't gonna try, they gonna figure a way around it.
Yeah, they'll figure a way out, yeah, they'll figure a way out.
Real quick, I just have a question, what is this? This is a student ID, right?
Yeah, see, tho- those are IDs that are made by, made by, um, Life Touch, okay? So those are official student ID, so Life Touch makes those, if you buy a pic, they make them for all the kids at the, at the levels, and they, they give them to them, but that, but we don't use those as a student ID system. We don't have them, we used to have, years ago, we had a student ID system that when you came, you had to show your ID, I don't know if you guys remember that, Mr. Andrews?
I remember it, yes, sir.
Yeah, Life Touch just makes, they just make those for us, and I, you know, I, I can't tell you when I, when that we got away from that, I, I don't know, I know, but I know since I've been in, since I've been a principal and in the building, we did not have those student ID.
Gotcha. Anything else on the food service?
Just one other thing, on the interactive list, just like we have the files where a person can be real time in it making changes, so if we have that list of all our students' names, um, that you can check off as their parent go, so I think back to the interactive list, uh, Mr. Howard, working with the technology people to see if we can come up with a list of students, because that way you really do have real time, and each person at each building know that person has been checked by someone at Westbrook, and so when they show up at Madison Park, they're already checked, that person know that they've been checked. So I think I like that, I, I think if we can move to that, it would be, um, it would take care of our Trotwood students, and then it would also eliminate double pickups at each of the buildings.
And, and I, I just, just the, the logistics of that, figuring something out like that, who would man that, how would we, you know, because that means bringing somebody else in that has to, uh, has to do that as well, so I, I will definitely bounce these ideas around with our operations team to see what, what we could do to try to, try to figure this out, and I'll bring all these ideas and, and, and I, and I'll report back to you guys to see what we came up with.
Okay.
All right.
Um, Mr. Howard, um, how about an update on the online learning, um, the number of students actually that are participating online, and the number of students that have requested paper packets?
Okay, great, um, I, I brought Lisa in, uh, Lisa, are you still here with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Le- Lisa's joining us, and, and Lisa has been very diligent in, uh, in her team in managing all that, and I'll let Lisa give an update on some of the things that are going on, uh, uh, really, and she can kinda really do B and C unless you, you know, wanna just specific it as an agenda, so just wait on C, Lisa, until Ms. Moore identifies that to move on, so
Thank you.
But, uh, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, for the curriculum side, we have all, 100% of our teachers have Google Classroom setup, we were able to do that in the first, uh, the first, uh, few weeks of the shutdown. We also had, uh, close to 2,000 students that are actively, um, using the online access meaning they have access and they are actually interacting with their teachers and turning in work. So we also for page two are rolling out more interactive online work at the early learning center. We're not, we're making packets for all of those students, but Nate is actually doing a parent survey to see where they are with their at home. At home. Um, number. Nineteen hundred thousand that are logged in.
Ms. Minor, excuse me one moment. If, if everybody could mute. We would not have the interference because you're coming in and out. So we'll all mute, please.
So, so one thing we're thinking of moving forward and what we've planned is. Phase one was getting all the classrooms set up with Google Classroom. Making sure the families were comfortable with the, the flow of the work and students were able to. Access and follow teacher instructions. Phase two is to increase the quality of instruction. So one thing we're doing and to make it more interactive, there, we're providing specific training just for virtual. Teaching, because that's a different skill than of course the stand-up face-to-face in the classroom. So a professional, all teachers will get a professional development calendar and schedule every week. That they can, a lot of them are pre-recorded training sessions they can take. Uh, tips for Google Classroom, tips for presentations, tips for how to record your lessons. And let kids log in and follow through. Um, more and more of our teachers are trying new and engaging things. And so we're appreciating the efforts that they're making. Some of our principals are doing story time. Uh, Nate Warner is on his Facebook Live every day reading to students. I know the first day over four hundred kids uh, logged in and actually watched him read the story with the puppet show. And so a lot of act, exciting things were happening. What we did today was getting ready for Phase Two, we made sure we had paper copy work for all students that need it. Um, the high school students, all of their work will be at the high school to be picked up starting on Monday. And I will be at central office for grades K through eight for any families that still need. Uh, paper copy packets. We've got more than enough and they can just come in and pick it up. Um. Some of our seniors, we are, because some of them are going through credit recovery and things like that. We're actually able to offer them devices to take home to make sure they're able to get their work done. So Mr. McCray will be issuing those computers to seniors that need it on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week.
Can speak to that a little bit. So, um, what, what we, what we've decided to do is. We, we have some Chromebooks that are end of life that we are in the process of replacing. So um, we met with the administrative team the other day and we wanted to identify the seniors first. Those kids that need to get over that hump, that needed devices. So we've identified one hundred devices at this point that we are, that we have prepared and that will be ready on Monday. To distribute to seniors that need, that need devices. So Mr. McCray is um, is interacting with those, with those kids through the counselors, through his uh, social workers. Through his um, through his teachers and those devices that, those kids that need a device. We will uh, we will document that information and we will have a pickup day where they come in and they pick up a device. We hope it's not a hundred. And as Lisa said, we've, we've seen about, about two thousand kids that have showed active connectivity. So with those one hundred devices, we'll have those ready. And meanwhile, we are prepping eighty devices per building. That we will be able to distribute to the other buildings in the next two weeks. So my guys are coming up here and they're working in uh, in, in, in isolation. And they're gonna prep eighty devices per building and then our principals are going to. Survey uh, some of their um, not survey, but survey their kids, survey their population. And those folks that show that they need a device in the other buildings, K through six. We will have an opportunity to distribute devices to those folks as well. And again, these are end-of-life devices, devices that have to be replaced because we have to have devices when kids come back. But we are in the process of trying to prep devices for kids that need them in the event that they do not have a, do not have connectivity.
I do have, I do have a question about the paper packets. Is there a due date that these have to be? Are, or are there several due dates? Are teachers gonna be grading them? Or are they concerned about um, you know, actually handling the paper in regards to like the virus?
That's a, that's a great, that's a great question and, and Lisa and I can kind of, we can kind of piggyback on this as well. Uh, meeting with the superintendents today, everybody has that same exact. Same exact concern, uh, like Northridge. Northridge is not doing anything um, electronic. Everything they're doing is paper, paper packet. And what they're doing is folks are just coming in, dropping them off and they're just gonna leave them there. Uh, some folks are taking pictures of the packets uh, and showing them to the teachers. So there's a lot of concern about people handling those packets. And Lisa, you can talk a little bit about some of the things we discussed as well.
Yeah, so one thing, we definitely want students to do it. We want them to get credit for the work that they do. Um, as far as the due dates, the teachers are really in charge of that. Communicating with families, communicating with the students and guide them. So there's some kind of schedule on when they want assignments to be done. And we didn't wanna force any ta- teacher to handle and have too many people coming up, turning in papers and then. Maybe a teacher could contract the virus because they say it could be on the paper. So some of the creative ways is can the child show evidence that they did it? Today, several families from the early learning school, they were taking pictures of their students' work and sending it to the teacher. The teacher can clearly see that the child has done the work and they're interacting that way. So that's what we're recommending to teachers, to be creative about how they give the kids credit. We know the kids are doing the work. I talked to a senior today about some of her work and they can take a picture of it to show evidence, yes, it's done and give that child credit.
And the, the, um, I, I would say, one of the things I, I, I would, you know, also follow up and piggyback is that. In-house Bill ninety-seven, the governor made this statement about kids that are on track. Or do no harm with regards to where we, where we stop school. So the debate amongst the county right now is. What are we gonna do with fourth quarter grades? Some people are saying, okay, we're at a point where we're just gonna, we're gonna focus on our seniors. And we're gonna grade the stuff that the seniors are doing, those kids that are marginal, those kids that need that extra push to get over the hump. And then everything else shuts down at third quarter. And then what we're doing is for reinforcement, for enrichment, et cetera, et cetera. A couple of districts are saying, no, we're gonna wait and we're gonna have these folks hold this stuff till this is over and we're gonna grade it when they come back. So there's a lot of different, you know, thoughts about how, how we're um, you know, how we're gonna do. You know, do the management of, of, of collecting these packets and, and, and absorbing grades, so on and so forth, but. I think what we've done is we've kind of left it a little open-ended at this point right now to ensure that we have. The connectivity and the connection with the kids with doing a serious direct plan. On what we're gonna do with our seniors to ensure that they get through for graduation.
Speaking of.
I'm sorry, go right ahead, Mrs. Scares.
Um, not to, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Minor, please go ahead. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll wait.
Well, one thing I wanted to add about the seniors is prior to the shutdown. The counselors at the high school communicated with every senior that was at that point not on track to graduate. Meaning you're short these credits, this is what you have to do. Um, and, and many of you know, we have Apex Credit Recovery. So those students have been working on that plan. While we're going through this process. So hopefully by May, they'll have those courses done. Now, the way the online Apex works is every Sunday, we can log in and see who's on track, what their grades are. Whether they've met the standards of getting that credit. So that's a big advantage to our seniors. And so I'm excited that Mr. Howard and the tech team are issuing computers to those seniors who may not have had devices. Cause now they can get that opportunity and try to get some of their courses caught up if they need it.
Okay. Um, first, whoever that is calling, you better mute your phone. Secondly.
No, I was, okay. So, Ms. Minor, have we started tracking the students that were using Apex? To see how, if they're logging on and.
Yes, so we're.
Yeah.
So every, yeah, that, it's automatic. Every Sunday, we get a report on who's on track, who's not. And so we have high school administrators and the counselors, they're the ones actually calling those students. It's almost like an online coach, you know, they say, yes, you're on track, or if you're not, hey, you need to get caught up. And so that's been going on throughout, throughout the process.
So in terms of the seniors, has a, a conversation been had about graduation?
Well, well, that, that was one of the things I was gonna bring up under my comments. Uh, if you wanna talk about it now, that's, that's up to you or if you prefer to, for, for um. Yeah.
I can wait.
Okay.
I can wait.
Okay. Um, I know, um, Mr. Howard, you were saying that uh, Ms. Minor has the information on the staff online PD and how that's going?
Yes, she, she spoke to it a little bit. Go ahead, Lisa, and talk about um. About um, what, what, what our plan is for that pa- staff PD to continue to provide that support for, for staff. Because we have some folks, to be honest with you, they are, they are, they are bad as me at this stuff. And they are doing the best that they can and I, and I really commend a lot of them. Uh, some of them, as we call them dinosaurs, that uh, that have jumped in, uh, and, and we went from, I think. You know, and, and, and just think about this because we talk about our profession and we talk about our, 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 our educators and where we are. In three days, we transitioned this whole district, and this happened across the state and across the country. From face-to-face, traditional, with some, with some blended learning aspects to completely remote learning. And it took us, it took us three days to get this stuff up and running. So Lisa, talk about the PD, the ongoing PD that we have. To uh, to help continue to support these, to support the thing.
So we have uh, several PD opportunities. We actually have a PD calendar. Where the teachers can see every week, online webinars, um, Google Classroom PDs. Uh, or virtual learning tips. There's a professional development opportunity for teachers to log in. And observe, how do you teach reading online? I mean, it's as creative as they even guide the kids through the interactive where they're reading back with the teacher, all of those things. So what we've done, as you know, all the curriculum resources we've purchased are digital. So our partners, our curriculum partners are providing free online. Training for our teachers on how to use the products virtually. So every week they can sign up and log in and for, as a team or, well, of course, virtually from their home. Participate and get the training. We want it and, and we have a requirement for each teacher to at least do one every two weeks. And sometimes they're one hour, sometimes they're two hours and the teachers are simultaneously teaching through the day. So. The principals are having meetings and we're doing live training sessions at the staff meetings, giving tips. Uh, teachers are able to share and collaborate with each other and share lessons. And so it's really, we're seeing some teachers becoming even more engaged in this process than some of their face-to-face work. So we're really excited about it, but taking it to the next level means maybe it's more interactive, maybe more presentations. PowerPoints, videos, all kinds of things that can be done through technology is what we're guiding the teachers through. So our goal is that, yes, because of the coronavirus, we're shut down, but when we come back to school. They'll have a lot of technology tools that they may not have had before from going through this. It'll be a learning process for everyone.
Um, thank you, Ms. Minor. At our last meeting, you know, I said, this presented us with a really good opportunity. And one I don't, I, I don't want us to lose sight of just because we get back into the buildings. I truly, truly, truly believe we need to create the Trotwood Virtual Academy. Um, ongoing as a way to offer something that no other school district is offering in a way that we can offer it. Um, has there been any conversation about. An ongoing virtual learning experience or virtual learning academy, if you will? Once the schools open back up, even, you know, onto next year?
Yes, it, I mean, it's something we've been talking about for a couple of years and this experience lets us know. We definitely have the knowledge, the skills and the resources to pull it off. Because we're doing our virtual academy now. We're watching closely, you know, there's some teachers that are highly engaged in it. So we'll have a whole pool of people to choose from that might be, you know, maybe it's their expertise. And so we're still, um, of course, Ms. Love Allen handles alternative programming. We'll be working with her, but we definitely have the resources. Um, and we're developing the skills to really make it a quality program. And, and we wanna offer that because there, uh, the last we checked when Mr. Nadir was here, I think there was a potentially five hundred kids. That are in the city of Trotwood that are in a virtual academy. We can get them for ours. We would want them for our Trotwood Virtual Academy, so.
And to follow up with that a little bit, Lisa, um, the, the superintendent's meeting we had today. One of the, the, the kind of funny uh, themes, you know, in, 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 in just in a time when things are not real funny is that. This process is creating an avenue that's gonna put some of these other places out of business now. And those folks are worried. They're worried now because. We are, like I said, within three days and over a three-week span, we've created virtual academies. And these, you know, these K-twelves and these, all these other folks that pride themselves on that. They're, they're kind of scared right now because they know now the districts have the bandwidth. To uh, to put some of these things together. So yeah, I, I just wanted to add that.
And we should put them out of business. Um, and I, I probably am as serious about this as Ms. Freeman is about coding. Like this needs to be something that is in our portfolio for twenty twenty-one school year. Like this needs to be something that we need to promote, you know, due to our, um, you know, un- unfortunate circumstances. This has been a, a true blessing and I think it needs to be something that we promote for enrollment, like this fall. Seriously.
Yeah, um.
I agree.
Yeah.
I am in total agreement with uh, Mr. Scares. Because interesting enough, we have to get more creative. We talked about this about a year and a half ago. If you recall, when uh, with Mr. Nadir and the virtual uh, alternative school. So we had the capacity then, we have the capacity now, now we have the ability. So I can definitely see it as part of our ongoing learning community. Or even a separate virtual school. Maybe a Trotwood Charter School, I'm just saying, so that we can capture. Every child in, in Trotwood and in the surrounding areas if, if necessary.
A- as long as we don't call it alternative learning.
No, we won't. That was Mr., that was, that was Mr. Nadir's program, if you recall. All right.
Yeah.
Miss, one, one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, are, are the teachers coming to school every day? Are they still coming to work every day?
No, no, they, they are not. No, they are not. We um. We have given the um, the principals um, some autonomy to. Open the buildings up for individuals that may need to come and get some resources. But uh, on a um, on a day-to-day basis. The only folks that are in the building are, are custodian folks that are coming up there to check the buildings. Um, we, we've gotten to a point now where our food service folks are only up there now once, twice a week at max. We're trying to keep these buildings as clean as, as clear as possible. Uh, and anytime we have folks up, we, we try to keep it under the threshold of, of ten people. Uh, Trotwood Police was out here today, just, you know, just to give you some, some information. They were out here today. Uh, and they came by and they saw some activity here at the building. And, and I think they came in and they checked on Lisa and them to see, and to see who was, who was doing. You know, who, what was going on in the building. So they are aware, I've talked, I've talked to Chief Wilson. And I let, I've let him know that we uh, we are gonna have folks in and out of the district. And what he's asked is that if they are in and out or they're out of building, that they just have their IDs. They show their IDs and they um, and they make sure that, you know, they just give them the intent, where they're going, what they're doing. And also, uh, Montgomery County was out here today. Public Health Montgomery County was out here today. And they are scanning, uh, they're scanning the neighborhood. So folks are serious about this and, and I wanna be just as serious about it as other folks. So when we bring folks in, we keep it under that threshold of ten folks. We get folks in and out, because there are gonna be some people that, that have to be here. Uh, and we, we do understand that, but on a day-to-day, no, we do not have people coming in every day. Sorry, Mr. Scares, that was so long, but I wanted to make sure you got all that information.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Howard, um, and it's maybe a question for Ms. Minor. Are we logging our professional development hours for our staff, so at the end of this, we can say we have 1,500 PD hours? Or keeping some sort of document or, or just record?
Well, what we have is each teacher gets a certificate after they finish the professional learning. Um, but we will make sure, that's a good point, that we can capture that, because there's several PD sessions going on every day. So, well, I'll make that suggestion and have all the principals keep track, because the teachers are required to give the principals their, email the principals their certificate to show they did their hours for the week.
And with, uh, with our classified folks, um, on Monday, we're gonna send out, um, up to 25 hours of PD through Public School Works to keep those folks engaged. And when I say classified folks, the parents that are not engaging, uh, that are not working with food service, that are not working, um, with, um, with transportation, we're gonna send those out, and then we will be able to log those hours as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I see Ms. Freeman's mouth moving.
Yeah.
We can't hear.
So I wanted to know for the online learning, how is that, if I'm a teacher, are they logged on the regular hours that they would be if school was then, or is it only a certain number of hours a day? And are we tracking the teachers that are logging on and the hours that way?
Go, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. We are tracking, every Tuesday, we do a Google Hangouts conference call like this with all administrators, and we provide them an ed tech update of the percentages of teachers in their building that are still actively using their Google Classroom, logging in every day. Um, and it does get down to the details of the minutes and hours logged in and student activity.
Right.
And keeping that, it's like a chart that we can share with the board even, but we do that every week, just to, as an accountability piece. Um, some of the meetings that I did mention that are happening, that we were nervous about, but it's going really well, is IEP meetings that were scheduled. Normally, the parents have to come and do an annual IEP meeting, and we had several scheduled through this time. Those are going extremely well, doing it through the Google Hangouts, and the parents are appreciating being able to communicate and still stay on track with their child's work.
Okay. So do the parents have, uh, so if I had a child and I needed a question, how are parents engaging with the teachers for questions about a particular online?
So every, so one of the trainings, when we started back on March 12th and 13th, there was a requirement that every teacher had to communicate with all their parents to let them know what was about to happen, and how they could reach them. So our teachers are communicating via email. There's something called Class Dojo, where it's like a message. Um, some of them have the Remind app. They, they're using ver- many ways through technology to communicate with their family. One parent, because her teacher, this was like after four days, her teacher, she had several teachers in a couple of different buildings, more than one child, and several of, she kept getting so many text messages. She was telling me to tell the teachers to stop contacting her, because there was so much communication. So the teachers know it's, and, and we want to be respectful of the parents' time. Yeah, they know, we're watching that as well.
And Google Classroom also lets you private message those respective teachers as well, because we private, private message all of, all of the kids' teachers, just through Google Classroom.
And, and we also have, um, our media specialists onboard, uh, and from, from eight to, you know, and, and what, what I did is, you know, when all this happened, I, I, I was very frank and told everybody, you are working during school hours. You're working during school hours. So, you know, I, I'm that guy sometimes, so, uh, my, my son had a problem with his, uh, with his login this morning. So I said, text your media specialist right now. And within two minutes, she responded, reset his password, and got him set back up. So we, we've got.
Mr. Howard, of course, they're gonna respond to your son.
But, but I have, but I have, I have not, I have not heard yet that our, that our help desk stuff and our help desk tickets, I've heard that that system has been, has been pretty faul- uh, flawless so far, and it's been working pretty well.
Hmm. And last, last week was spring break, so technically, our media tech, tech, our media center technologists were off, but they continue to answer help desk calls, continue to service the families. Uh, parents call in and students call in when they need assistance with the technology.
And, and one of our steps that we're looking at for, for the future is establishing the Google Voice a- a- aspect of it, where we, along with the Google Classroom, we establish Google Voice phone numbers, where kids can call in and have this dialogue with the, with the teachers via a phone number, so they don't have to use their personal, their personal lines. That's something that we're talking about and trying to figure out how we can, how we can do that. There's a cost for all that, if we do it as a, as a district, but if they do it individually, they can do it on their own. So we're working through that process, process as well.
Hmm. And, you know, we have some pretty good statistics that I think would help, uh, ease some of the concerns that maybe just our community has, that we had 2,000 students make connectivity with the online classroom. So I think sharing that would let people know that our Trotwood students are still engaged, and, um, yeah, I think that's good news.
Hey, do we have, do we have any money, um, on the contract with, um, Catapult?
Uh, well, well, we, 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 we do, I believe, but there were a couple of things that, that, uh, were up in the air with regards to some projects that they were working on for us. And the last one would, would probably wipe out what, what they had, and that, I hadn't even brought that to the board's attention yet. That was something that I was gonna have on an agenda, but it, but that could be something that they could, you know, that they could help us with, but as far as this, this, this contract, I, I think, getting the information from the board on where, where they want to move with, with this, this other idea with regard to, um, alumni. Would, that would wipe out the contract, but not, not saying that we couldn't pay them for helping us do something else.
I'm sorry, the here with alumni, share, share more.
Okay, well, I, I haven't, I haven't presented that to the board yet, because this thing happened. But, um, what, what I had Catapult do is, there have, there, there's been some dialogue and some, um, some concerns and some questions about why we do not have our class pictures up. We went through, we went through this whole phase of getting them back. I don't know if you remember that. Uh, some of you guys may have not been on the board when I did that, but yeah, I went back and forth with, um, with the Trotwood Historical Society, and I finally got them to give those pictures back to us. So now the, you know, the prevailing question is out there, and there's a, there's a alumni page that's run by some other folks. And the, the prevailing question is, why are pictures not displayed? So, uh, one of the things I had, uh, Catapult do is research, and I don't know if you guys have, have seen that, my son plays AAU basketball, so I get an opportunity to go across the country and see different high schools and, and things. And one of the things that I see a lot of high schools, more modern high schools do have is these digital displays and interactive displays, where you can actually go in, you can go to like sports records, or you can go to class pictures, or you, you can, there's a litany of things that you can do digitally, digitally, that instead of having a big Hall of Fame, if I come in from the class of 72, I can come in and I can click 72, and then this big digital display comes up, and my class picture comes up. So Catapult is doing some research on, on that for me, and they put together a preliminary, preliminary proposal, and putting together like three or four modules and, and four or five different stations. It was all about, like about $9,000, but they're still reworking it. But I never got to the point where I had a proposal that I, I could present to the board at that point, that, and I didn't want to move, especially with the transition, unless I had an opportunity to talk to, uh, Dr. Cosby about that as well.
That sounds like something, honestly, that we should table right now. Um, you know, in light of everything that we are doing, and deciding on the information that we want to get out to the community. Like Ms. Jeter Freeman said, there are some things that we really want to make sure that the community knows that we're doing. 2,000 students actually logged on, and, and even the, the, the food program and the PD hours that our staff is gathering o- over this, or during this time. And also just basic, essential information, so.
Right.
You, you know, um, and I want to, the other board members to chime in, I want your thoughts on that direction, because I don't want to do fluff stuff, and we've got real hardcore stuff that needs to be done now.
Yeah, and, and I didn't move on that, but that was about nine grand, and I didn't know if we wanted to move that to Catapult, because I know there were, there was this, 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 this comment, those comments out there about, you know, those types of things, but again, you're right. The, the, the now is, is, is a lot more, is a lot more concerning, and, yeah. I, I have had a conversation with Rachel about, whatever you need us for, let us know. So if we want to start putting together some things with them with that, I would be more than, uh, more than happy to, to get that dialogue going out, just to start shooting some information out there with regards to some of the things that are going on.
Mm-hmm. You know, Marlon, right before all of this hit, we usually do that quarterly card, and we, uh, had actually talked about it, if you recall, but then there were so many things that were happening with the opening of the health center, and then the new superintendent, and then one thing led to another, and now we have this pandemic. But, um, you know, again, I think for, for me, and I'll, and I'll share my thoughts, information is key. Keeping people informed on where we are as a district family, where we are with our students and education and learning going on, and how we're serving families, just really outward communication is gonna be important. So, um, again, I'm, I'm glad that, um, you know, that, that this conversation came up, that Catapult, to make sure we're not just throwing dollars away when we can use them to.
So how about, how about I, uh, I reach out to them tomorrow? I, I don't know what they're, what they got going on, uh, but she has reached out to me. So how about I reach out to them tomorrow and talk about a prospectus mailer that we sent home? You know, in the mindset of, we're still here, here's the things that we're doing, here's the information that, you know, that you, if you need to contact somebody, so on and so forth, something to that aspect?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. I can do that. I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow and follow up.
I wanted to say that I think if I remember correctly, Marlon, there was about 16 to $20,000 left, but I can double-check that.
Right. That was before, that was before the, the change in other pictures and the, I think the, um, the board dedication plaque. So I, I think some of that, some of that's come off. I think it's like 11 now, I think she told me.
Okay.
But I, I, what I do, I'll reach out to them tomorrow, and then I'll have some dialogue, and I, and I'll follow back up with, uh, follow back up with you guys, and let you know what they said, and touch base with, with Denise, and just kind of figure out what they can do to help, help do some, you know, just some, some informational damage control per se, just to let folks know that we're still here, we're still working, and, and our, our kids are connected.
Yeah, and that we're very engaged, um, and we want to make sure we keep them engaged. Um, any other comments before we move on to treasurer comments?
Uh, I, I do. Um, I think that the discussion we've just had, I think, um, that would be on point, especially the part about mailing out, uh, information to let, um, our students and parents and other community members know that we're still operating, and also make, making sure that everybody's aware of the, uh, help desk and the effectiveness of the help desk and the availability of it, so that, um, um, everybody, everybody knows that not only are we, are we engaged, but we have assistance for those who are, are, uh, having problems trying to become engaged. And I think the, uh, the idea of, of letting the community know that we have pretty much every student that we have, uh, online and working, uh, is very positive and very commendable, and, and I think a lot of people need to know, need to know that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rand.
I do have one comment, and I don't know if we have, if we want to address this or not, but there are some burning questions that people have. And I don't know, um, if we want to, I don't know, address those in any way, or would this mailer almost be like you're trying, we're trying to sugarcoat things? Like, for instance, people do want to know if there is going to be an actual graduation. People do want to know how students are going to be, or if they're going to be promoted, you know, how that process is gonna go. So if we don't have answers to those questions, perhaps we should wait until we have the answers, um, because maybe this mailer that talks about how many meals are being served each day will kind of be seen as maybe a smokescreen, because they really want to know if there's going to be a graduation, or they really want to know if kids are going to be promoted. So, you know, just kind of think about that, because we don't want to s- seem like we're, I don't know, hiding, just for lack of a better term, hiding things. You know, we want to make sure that we're being transparent, and, you know, maybe we could, I don't know how we would, you know, mention it, but we want to make sure that they understand that that's something we're still working on, you know?
Well, yeah, and, and my thought was that we wouldn't just throw a mailer out. I mean, this is a process, and we don't even know if school's gonna come back May 1st, or if we're at the end of the year, or where we are. So every week, it seems as if things are changing, but we can at least start compiling information, good information, and, you know, Ms. Bozeman, that's a great idea. What do parents want to know? You know, um, those burning questions. And as a parent, you have those questions, and, and Mr. Scares has those questions. Where do we go from here? Um, and we can maybe collaborate on how we can get those burning questions answered on that mailer and on that piece. So nothing would go out anytime soon. I mean, we're not talking this month. We're really kind of waiting on a directive from the governor as well. So, um, even with diplomas, somebody called me and asked me if their child was gonna get their diploma and what that would look like, and all kinds of things, even kindergarten graduation, somebody asked me.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
He, um, okay, so the federal government and, and the state has withdrawn , um, testing requirements, as well as district report cards. Um, how does that affect, how would that, and I don't know if this would be in your graduation update or not, but how would that affect our students matriculating further?
Well, that, that's a great question, and, and I think one of the things that we discussed today, uh, with the, um, with, with the superintendencies is an, an attempt by, by public school districts across the state to ask for at least two years of, of excuse from state testing, based upon what, what has happened. Um, there, there really has been no other guidance out, other than that testing has been, has been suspended for this year. But, you know, the concern is that, you know, our kids, some of our kids, not all of them, but some of our kids are going to continue to get further behind. And some of the districts like, like ours, like Dayton Public, like North Ridge, like Mad River, you know, our, our stance is, you know, has kind of been, well, we need, we need an additional year before we start, you know, start these, this evaluation process back up. So that, that is out there, but there ha- really hasn't not been any other follow-up guidance, other than testing has been suspended.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And, and then to Ms., to Ms. Bozeman's point, and I, and I think that's a great point. Um, what, what we talked about today amongst the superintendents is that we're all kind of waiting to see what happens after May 1st. Because if, if we come back to school, how are we gonna come back to school? How many kids are gonna come back to school? How many parents are gonna send their kids to school? How many activities are we gonna be able to have? Are we gonna be able to have a graduation? If we don't come back to school at, at, on May 1st, and we, we, we call it a year, then the mindset is, okay, do we establish rain dates? We've already touched base with UD to try to, uh, to try to establish a rain date in late June or early July, in the event that we do have an opportunity to have a graduation. an opportunity to have a graduation and they lighten up those standards because to be honest with you, I, I don't think people are going to be gathering like this, like, like we've traditionally have in a long time. So, you know, those are some of the things that we're just trying to figure out, you know, if we come back May first, what is school going to look like? You know, and then after May first, if we do not come back, then when can we sit up, sit and say, okay, June first, we can have mass gatherings again because graduation would be a haven for, for some of this, you know, for some of this stuff. So li- like Ms. Moore said a little while ago, you know, stuff is just changing day by day. And I, I've had to even kind of get, not get on my staff, but talk to my staff a little bit and say, hey, guys, slow down a little bit, slow down because we got to see what's coming next because we just don't know. We've even put together, and I'll share this with you guys, we've even put together a delayed schedule based upon if we don't come back to school after Labor Day versus where we are, where we are now. So we've already got that in the works. Just in the event that we got to pull that out of our back pocket and say, okay, we're not going to come back to school until after Labor Day. So, you know, those are the types of things where it's just like, we're just, we're just holding on, waiting for, you know, you almost wish the governor would say, okay, school's done and then we could start planning. But, you know, if we could, if we bring back kids May first and they say, okay, you can bring them back, but don't have more, more kids than, you know, don't have more than thirty kids in a, in a group together. Well, that affects classrooms, that affects gym class, that affects lunches, that affect, you know, you know, so we're just kind of just holding on to.
So I agree with Ms. Bozeman. I think those are burning questions that people do want to know. Um, and I think e- even if we sent out a mailer, I think it's important for us to communicate the stuff that we do know about in terms of the, the, the children that are logging on, the percentage of, of, of students that are logging on. And then mentioned, you know, we are still, you know, working out things about graduation and matriculation and things along those lines. But I do think it is important that we get the information that we do have and that we do know out as quickly as possible without or not without mentioning those important things that people do want to know about. Even if it, it's nothing but telling them, we're still waiting on direction on how to do that.
Right.
Or, or how to, how to address that. You know what I'm saying?
And I tell you, I'll tell you the big ones, Norman, the, the big ones that we've gotten through, through folks contacting Ella, and Ella's on here. So she can even speak to this is graduation number one, is my kid going to graduate? Number two is, are my kids going to get promoted? What happens? Because you got some of those parents that are, you know, that are hanging on a limb. And then the other one is, which is, 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 is surprisingly good, is open enrollment. Are we still going to be able to, you know, open enroll our kids? And then kindergarten registration and preschool registration. Those are the things that, you know, because a lot of that stuff has to take place, especially kindergarten, preschool, it has to take place face to face between the screening. So what we've, what we, what we're doing, and I, I was going to talk about this a little bit more, but since we're on the topic is we're actively pursuing this final forms platform where, okay, in the event that we cannot have in-person registration, we got this online platform where we can gather all this data and when we have an opportunity to meet face to face again, we have documentation for registration. We already have that stuff. So those are some of the things that we're just, you know, that are just out there that we're, we're constantly just kind of waiting to see which way things are going to go.
If I can, if I can play devil's advocate for a moment, um, has the conversation ever been had, well, what if we do just, you know, advance everybody?
Well, yeah, there was some discussion about that and I, and I think that's where one of the, um, one of the points was third quarter, where you were third quarter. If you had already gotten to that point where you were going to be, or you were, you were going to be promoted and then addressing and attacking those kids that were struggling, that were struggling, and then trying to put something together for those kids to see if we can get those kids over the hump. Still putting information out there, still, um, still connecting and engaging with everybody. A, a, a full-scale attack on those kids that were struggling so we could try to get everybody just to the next level, just to the, to the starting line for next year.
Because I feel like wouldn't that be within our control to, to kind of kind of navigate?
It is. It is. It is.
The other point to that is, remember now, we're doing online learning now. So the teachers are still teaching. Those online schools that are out there, they've been teaching totally online as well. So if we're continuing to do that, why wouldn't we continue to pass our students? Why wouldn't they be promoted to the next grade level?
That's true.
My thought, I don't, irregardless of which day, whether it's May first, May thirtieth, if the stu-, if the teachers are teaching, the students are engaged, then at the end of what would have been the school year, our students are promoted and they graduate. That's it for me.
That makes a lot of sense.
And so this is a chance too. I think the board, I think we have some work. I think we have to engage with our uh, state board to say, uh, to see where they are because you know, we have to share ideas on how we think it should work if they don't have ideas or at least hear what they're thinking.
I, I think this presents us, and I, I completely agree with Ms. Freeman, and I think this uh, presents us the opportunity to be front runners um, in our area. This is, we've got this under control. We're not waiting for instruction or direction. We've got enough information already to say, this is how we're handling it for our district and then have other districts use us as a prototype or a platform to say, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty good idea. Because if something happens and the governor says, well, you know, we're not coming back to school till the fall, you know, or whatever, we already have a plan in place. And like Ms. Freeman said, we're still teaching. The, the students are still learning, the teachers are still teaching. There isn't any, to be quite honest, there really isn't any excuse.
Right.
To, to, to say.
I mean, we didn't just stop. The teachers have not just, at least for our district, they've not just stopped teaching. They're still teaching. That was the relevance of the two thousand number. That two thousand of our students logged on to be taught. That we have PD. So I want to flip it to what we are doing and where we are staying the course to get our students where they would have been had this not happened. So we, so Mrs. Scarce, we've already created our virtual academy for the end of this school year because they're still teaching, they're still learning. And if I did have a student in school and they were doing and fulfilling all those things, I expect them to be promoted at the end of what would be the school year.
And let me, let me just say from a parent's perspective.
Yeah, and, and I'll say this, I, I think, I think we are, we are all on the same boat with that. But, but I just, I, I want to be, you know, on the other side of that and just the clarification from the point that it would be no penalty. So if you got one of those kids that was marginal, that, is that was marginal, that, that had to do something fourth quarter to make it. Are we saying, are, are we collectively saying, and this is what the superintendents are talking about as well, are we collectively saying, you know, if that kid doesn't engage, does that kid still make it too?
You know, we have our parent engagers and social workers and deans and everybody else. We be cau-, we, we need to be calling them if they're not engaging. If we're getting that report, at least for those that were on the bubble for Apex every Sunday. If after we reach out to them and they don't engage, then yeah, you don't need to pass.
Because there are.
I agree with that.
I, I'll be frank, there are going to be some kids that are not going to engage. And we just want to make sure that, you know, we, because most of our kids are engaged and I, and I think Lisa can attest to this. We, we are, we're in a good place where it comes to that point, but it's that other group.
Right. And we always have that, that small number.
Right.
And I, I agree. And I think it, it, that we should afford those kids every opportunity to get engaged. We should make sure that we are, are making a, a real effort to, uh, even an extra effort to get them involved and engaged. And, uh, I, I think that's, that's more than fair in, in light of, of, of where we are with everything.
I've got Ella on the call and, and Ella, can you talk just real briefly about what we're doing with our, our parent engagers and our social workers to, to engage those folks? You got a quick second?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm one of those folks that Mr. Howard has had to slow down a little bit. So, um, the first thing I want to say is the emphasis regarding the message that I did, the autodollar message about information being available later in April because I've been receiving number of calls and text messages about the following. Grades, registration, graduation, is there going to be a prom? What about open enrollment? Promotion, testing, the graduation piece with prom, parents want to know about transcripts and the availability of that with all the college registration piece. And so, um, I got a link message this morning and I stated, um, to a parent who was concerned about her child being able to qualify for college, what does all of this mean? So when Mr. Howard joined the phone call this morning, the conference with Ms. Love Allen and I, we were discussing ways that we could communicate some things to our families, even if it's nothing more than these are the things that we are considering. I think parents want more from me, more than an announcement. They want some information. So I'm going to, um, ask Mr. Howard to work with you all to provide some information rather than an announcement to our families if we want to use. And, and I'm not trying to step out of line or anything. I'm just giving you the feedback that I'm receiving. And talking with Ms. Love Allen and Ms. Johnson today about the Twenty First Century staff, the parent engagers, the social workers and the, um, the principals have pretty much, Ms. Minor, you may be able to tap into this. The principals are pretty much leading all of this work. They are using their staff to make sure that their building is intact, that families have information about internet access, school supplies, food delivery, if they have stable housing. Right now, we know that our families, especially those that are doubled up right now because there is no ebb and flow. Um, property owners can clearly see who is and who should not be in their residences. And so our staff members, our parent engagers and our social workers are being very delicate in how they approach those questions with our staff, I mean, with our families. Just to ensure that privacy is there. Um, our families that are in shelters, what do they need for support? Particularly our McKinney Vento, um, our medically fragile students, what do they need? So the social workers, the parent engagers, the deans, all of them are really under the direction of the building principals who've taken the lead for this work. Um, the only other thing that I can add, Mr. Howard, if I could, if, if you don't mind, um, this time of year, I'm pretty much working towards August and September. So here are some of the questions that I've been asked. Non-academic family and student support services, um, what about athletics and band? I'm just giving you all the whole list so you can know what people are thinking. Um, what does attendance look like? Those students that were in the, um, attendance intervention program? Does that mean now that they are no longer, are they on track now for attendance? What does that mean? Um, the back-to-school bash, are we still having that? Are we all going to be receiving the calendars with the school year? Do we know when the school year is actually going to end? Or start for the 2021 school year? What about the donations? Mr. Howard already spoke about student registration, preschool, McKinney Vento. Um, I got a question the other day about the high school musical. Why are we uploading, um, auditions? Is that really going to happen? So I'm just giving you the running list. Um, the Memorial Day tornado, is there going to be some type of dedication or remembrance commemoration for that or something? Um, nutritional supports, are there chances for a parent engagement hotline or a universal hotline? Somebody suggested eight-five-four Rams, just where they could call in and get information. Um, summer school, the summer feeding sites, the schedules. Um, are packets going to be available? And I think one of you alluded to the fact, what happens when I finish a packet? Um, when I drop that off, is my child going to receive an immediate grade? So those are the things that are being discussed. Um, I don't know how you want to, I, I guess it's kind of like herding cats, but.
Right. I appreciate that, Ella, and, and I think that, um, as you can see, uh, board, you know, there are a lot of things that, there are a lot of answers that people want and they're, they're not even questions yet because we don't know if we're coming back to school or not. And, you know, I, I just, we, we, we've gotten, we've gotten so far ahead of the game that I've had to al- almost kind of pull folks back and say, we got to see what, first it was April sixth and now it's, we got to see what May first looks like. If they bring us back May first, which I doubt they will, we got to see, why, why would we plan a back-to-school bash if we know we're not going to be able to have large groups? You know what I mean? So folks' wheels are turning, but I'm just, I, I, I'm just apprehensive to just keep planning and planning until, until we just figure out what's going to happen. So I totally agree and I, I think from our standpoint, getting it out there and say, these are the things that, that we're waiting on. The info, as soon as we get the information, we could share it. But I just don't think school is going to look like school until like school used to look for another three or four months. And I, and I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just at wit's end and everybody is, everybody is, the conversation we had downtown. Everybody is, it's just, we don't know what school's going to look like when we come back. We just don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
You're right.
You know, and, and, and that'll be, uh, it may be a virtual, um, retreat for the board and you guys to really talk about some of those things because we still have the business of the district regardless. And, um, having a Plan A, B, and C, re- regardless of what happens, just staying in front of it. This district has always been very successful when we get in front of things. And this is another one of those things. So just keep that in, in your, in mind, um, as we move forward. Um, treasurer's comments. Ms. Allen?
I'll unmute myself.
Oh, okay. There you go.
I had a couple of things to just say. Um, it, it was kind of, uh, I didn't, I, I didn't realize that someone had come over today. I actually had three of my staff members working. So the treasurer's office obviously still has to continue to pay individuals and we still have to pay bills. And so there were four of us in today. We're trying to stagger it. After today, um, the next time, any, anyone will be in the building will be Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, and that will be just the payroll personally and probably myself. So I just wanted to update you guys. And my staff is working remotely. We do have, uh, the ability to access um, all, most of our files. And so we can, uh, do that as well. When we talked about, Ms. Minor talked about virtual presentations. I had an opportunity yesterday to actually do one because I was supposed to go to Columbus, um, tomorrow, I mean, today, and, um, do a presentation that was entitled Student Activities. And so we actually did a live presentation where I did my presentation, I talked, and then, I don't know, she did Zoom or something. And so that will be available on the OASB document, documentation library. So I think that's, it's probably going away, uh, that's going to, uh, be something that we're, we'll be doing a lot more of. The other thing I wanted to say is, um, like Marlon said, I am, I am very nervous about the finances in terms of state revenue, in terms of, just, uh, uh, let's try to listen to the governor's, um, presentation at two o'clock every day. And, um, I, 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 I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks that I can at least give my board some information on where the finances, they see the finances come in. The governor talked about they are looking at twenty percent cuts in their area. And so I just want to make sure that we're not, I'm, I'm not, um, I'm sta-, I'm trying to stay in front of all of the discussion. And so, um, there are the possibility that we will be getting some more money from the federal government, but I can't seem to get any information. And so I'm just kind of waiting. Um, I will be trying to put together the five-year forecast presentation. Um, and that's supposed to be filed May thirty-first, but the way it's going, I know that they're probably going to extend that deadline as well. And so as soon as I can give. And so as soon as I can give financial information to the board, I will try to keep you guys as up to date as I can.
Thank you.
If I can, if I can, if I can say this to you just real quick, we should act like we're not gonna get that money. I'm just telling you, we should act like that. Um, and I think it, it is within the best interest of the board to really think proactively about increasing our enrollment and every single avenue in which that's possible. Um, and I, and I know that's a conversation for a later time, and I, I hope we keep that in the forefront of all of our conversations.
Very conservative on our end, Janice, and I know that you always have been. However, this is a good reason and a season to even be more diligent with conservative.
And I absolutely will be, um, President Moore and the rest of the board. Uh, we still, I think there's a silver lining also, because we're not having to spend, um, for the last three months, if we not, we're gonna go back to school. There is a possibility, obviously, that we wouldn't have as many expenditures that we had anticipated. There, there should be, I'm thinking that there should be, uh, money, uh, that we hadn't anticipated spending. So a, a, as soon as I can get all the pieces together and I can articulate it, um, best, I will, uh, come back to the board.
Yeah, cause you know, Mr. Howard, we don't have any fuel costs really right now, do we?
No.
That you talked about operationally.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's huge, food costs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Allen? All right. Thank you. Do we have, uh, Ryan Allen on with us? Okay. Okay. I know that Kim did send out her an invite, and, um, so she did get the information. So we'll move right on to the board comments. Mr. Andrews, do you have any comments? I'm sorry, Mr.?
I, I have, you, you skipped me, I know I've been talking.
Because, you know what, we've been talking so much. Maybe you get it all in, but what are your comments?
I do, I do have, I do have one, uh, and, and this is probably geared towards, uh, it's geared towards everybody but Myra and, um, and Norman. Um, the, the, the policy 8210 speaks to, um, speaks to Blizzard bags and online learning, and currently what we have in our policy only allows us, us, us up to three days for that. So, uh, Neola is, uh, working on addressing that, and that's something that the board will probably have to approve with regards to this pandemic extension of learning. But I just wanted to bring that attention to you guys with regards to 8210 and, and making sure that, you know, as we, as we continue this process, we will probably have to, uh, adjust that policy. And Neola is, is, is looking at that as well. But, but other than that, I will, I will keep you guys updated as, as I hear things. Um, a lot of the same dialogue going on in all of the districts across the county. And, uh, as, as I get information, I'll, I'll, I'll keep you guys updated.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews?
Not a whole lot. Uh, I think all things considered, uh, I, I've been very proud of our district. I think we've been very proactive, and I think we have, have done, uh, a really good job of looking at all possible contingencies as they've come up, or even trying to anticipate them and trying to, uh, have those things covered and addressed. And I think, I think that, um, we, that we've done a, a really good job. In terms of going back to normal, I, you know, that's, that's gonna be interesting to see how that pans out too. Cause I'm wondering how much of a, how much of what we're doing now, or what part of that is gonna become permanent and become our new normal, as we've had in other kinds of, uh, of, uh, extraordinary interventions in this country. So I, I think all that remains to be seen, but dealing with the things that we can and that we are, are kind of aware of in, in our realm is, uh, is education. I think we are, are, are doing well, and I think everybody's to be commended for all of the efforts and things that they have, uh, uh, put forth up to this point. I'm very pleased.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Scaris?
Lord, please let my kids go back to school. Let me say, let me say, I am, um, I really am touched at, um, some of the small things that the teachers and the staff are doing, like Mr. Mr. Warner's reading time. Um, Ms. Mrs. Loesch sent a, a card addressed to, uh, Olivia. Um, and it's, it has been, I think we talked about teachers and their ingenuity. And one of our work sessions one time, or a retreat or some, I think this has really given teachers the opportunity to be innovative in ways that cause them to remember why they kind of got into teaching to begin with. Um, and it has been just, it's been amazing, it's been amazing. And thank you to Mr. Howard and to all of the staff for all of the hard work that they have done. And if I ever downplayed in any capacity the teacher's importance, let me repent and apologize right now to all those listening, and please pass the word, cause what the teachers do for our children is absolutely invaluable. Um, and I never appreciated it more than I do right now. So thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Mr. Skinner, as well said, Ms. Peter Freeman?
I echo, uh, this wonderful support, um, the amazing support. You know, I drive by Westbrook and I see the cars out there, and I know the maintenance staff are cleaning. And then I know, um, Ms. Mallory staged in her teachers and support. Uh, but she did it to protect, you know, so we didn't have any large groups. And I know that each and every one of our staff are doing their best, but my hat's off to the maintenance, the transportation, and those that are making those phone calls. Um, and to Ms. Minor, Ms. Joanne Ising, Ms. Allen. And I can't say enough about how you've performed, Mr. Howard, and we really appreciate it. Uh, you stepped up, you've kept, you all have kept the community and the parents informed. You've put out all the information, all the questions. I know everybody's not online and they don't have it. But I think, um, I think we're in a really good place, and I do, and I still do believe that because our students are engaged, we need to push to make sure that whether we're in school or not, that effort that they put forth online is recognized. But thanks, uh, thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Peter Freeman. Um, Vice President, Ms. Bozeman?
Yes, I would echo those same sentiments. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a lot of hard work to do everything that everyone has done, but it's greatly, greatly appreciated. Um, I was kind of thinking about the new normal. I think I'm holding up okay. I just want to, my show's really bad, and I want to go out to dinner and, you know, with my friends. But other than that, I don't think things are gonna be the same. I think that everything is gonna be different, and I think we're gonna see life differently once we get out of, you know, isolation, out of quarantine. And I don't think that's a bad thing. And I think that I'm looking forward to what we're gonna be doing in education. And I'm, I'm really proud of our students, and I'm glad that we see our students differently because prior to this, we didn't think all of our students had access to the internet. But now that we see that they do, you know, we know that they have so much more. And so I'm, I'm very excited about it. I'm excited about our online academy because it's already happening. We just need to make sure everyone else knows that it's happening. So thank you for everything that you've done and that you're doing, and I'm looking forward to everything that is to come.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I just echo what everybody has already said, and, uh, given that, I'm excited about the new normal. I can see the possibilities of something bigger and better for in education as a whole and how it's being changed. This is true transformation and reform when we talk about education. So again, um, I want to say thank you to our Trotwood Madison family, community family, Ram Nation. I want to just say how proud I am of the students. And thank you, parents, if you're watching, thank you so much for just, uh, get, jumping right in and being connected at the hip with your student's teacher, with the district as a whole. And whatever it is that you need for your student to be successful, please do not hesitate to give us a call. Uh, we are still working. We are still moving the district forward, and we, there is still teaching and learning going on. So it's what other districts are doing, but we can definitely say what Trotwood's doing. And Trotwood's doing a wonderful, amazing job. Thank you. Everybody be safe, stay healthy, stay put, and we'll get, this too shall pass, we'll get through this. I now need a motion to go into executive session. Um, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual per BOE policy 0166 and ORC 121.22 G1 and B to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office per ORC 121 dot 22 G6. Um, official action may be taken.
So moved. A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Scaris and a second by Mr. Andrews. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Mr. Scaris?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Peter Freeman?
She's muted.
Yes. Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. We will now adjourn into executive session, it is 7:13 PM. Thank you.